Come up and they would count it by tens. And you know, seven, seventeen, twenty-seven, except for we're doing it the say-ten way, which is ten, seven.
One, ten, seven.
Or I'm sorry, I'm still learning how to do the say-ten way. Okay, you count.
One, ten, seven.
One, ten, seven, two, ten, seven, three, ten, seven, because we are building backgrounds for place value. So seventeen, we say one, ten, seven, for one, tens instead of ones. So this sounds very foreign. And this first year, we're teaching ourselves, because three is no longer this. Three is this. Six is this. You know, students were used to doing this. So all of these things that we, you know, we all have habits of doing, it's different now.
And I, as I understand it, that counting that you just displayed, the how old are you if you're not two, that's wrong. You're two.
I never say you're wrong. We just go over there and change the fingers around me.
To a certain extent, I think part of the concern here, oh, by the way, looking at some kindergarten stuff, where we say three equals, and so that's totally opposite of what you're doing here in first grade. Now, maybe that's trying to instill on kindergarters that there's a different way to look at it other than one plus one equals two. You're saying two equals. But I'm pretty sure the concerns I've heard expressed is that the kids are being asked to do the formulas before they even know what a three is. So we want to be careful, we don't get too far out there in the curriculum. To me, that's the wonderful thing about having great teachers, is that hopefully, as we implement this, the freedom of the teacher is to know not only the curriculum of their kids and know how to be successful in making them a teacher. But that's, to me, it seems like part of the angst is vocabulary and, you know, why does a kid, if he's one-year-old, hold up a one like this? Because it's easy. I mean, start teaching kids a culture of this is one is unusual. And if the job of the teacher is to convey the math more so than this, I understand this is sequencing, and so we learn, oh, I don't know if this is six or that's six. You know, somewhere, there's got to be a happy balance in a collaboration as we all learn this new thing, not only common core standards, but this particular group. And I hear you saying that. That just seems to be part of the challenge out there with parents trying to do their homework and everything comes back to the teacher, teacher, I'm trying to help Johnny with the homework and we're all trying to learn this thing and also try to see where we're going with it. And so I'm glad you're on the job and I'm glad we have wonderful math coaches too. But I'll let you keep going here and get back to some questions.
And following the pull-up see part of the lessons, there's an application piece to our lessons as well. And like I said, I expected to have something up here to show you. May I?
Please.
Okay. When my students walk into the classroom and they have a piece of paper, that's the application problem on their table. So they can come in and they can put their name and the date on their paper, they can glue in their application problem while I take attendance and feel there's more than I need a couple minutes to do. And we circle key information and I don't know, we sort of write switches and something up the district is doing circling, important words and numbers, things like that. And then we read the story problem, the application problem, and they find a solution. And I give them several minutes to work by themselves to see what they come up with. And then they get to talk to their partners, to their neighbors, and to add more, to make changes, to work together. And then we bring kids up to the front of the classroom and they show their examples. And we discuss and solve problems. And here, I just brought a student notebook and you can kind of see, and I brought my, my modeling notebook. The examples that you see in my notebook are examples that I recorded based on the students' work. Like, I walked around the room and I said, oh, I saw Johnny did this. You know, I saw so-and-so did this. And so then I write it down in my notebook as well. So we've got several examples all around. And that's kind of the application piece of it, is making it rigorous and relevant and applying math to the real world, to stories. And so that's why this looks like this is my student Amy's notebook. And if you go through, you can kind of see her growth as well, from the beginning of the school year until now, how everything's built upon, plus and a less, plus and a less. So that's the application piece. And then we have our concept development piece, and I just brought some manipulative tips that I used in my lesson today. And the students were doing counting on, and so they would cover up different number sentences, number strips. Like this one, this has the equal the total in the front. Well, they cover it up, get their mystery box, and then with their partners, they, they count up, they find the right answer, then they can, they can self-assess, they can check their answers. And if it's wrong, they can help each other, they, they work together, and it, it becomes a game because there are several of these. And if they get it right, they can keep it. So then there's a little competition in there, and they just love it. These are five-group cards. And some of them have dots on them to count with. So there's some differentiation here because we've got numerals and we've also got pictures. And they pull out a couple cards and, you know, we save the biggest number and we count on and we find a sum, a total, or a solution. And so just another game, if you will, that we play to learn the concept for the day. So this is what we did today during concept development. And then after we do our concept development, we have our problem set, which I did not bring an example of that because I thought I'd get it.
You know, you just described the manipulative, you said earlier that one of the concerns was we did away with manipulatives.
Right.
But we have them.
Exactly. It's none of my fault. Okay. So yes, that was, okay. Tomorrow, we're doing an activity with colored chips. One side's red, the other side's white, or beans. And it's a shake the disc game. And so they'll have seven of those chips and they shake them up and they drop them down. And if they have three reds and four yellows, three and four is seven. And then they've got a chart where they mark them off on their chart. It's just another use of manipulative and it's something that I would have put in a center with two people, and now I'm doing it in pairs of twelve. So it's, you know, they're there. It's just a different format. And so the problems that then are, oh, practice problems that we've been discussing through the day, and it's on a worksheet. And they, they get about ten minutes to work by themselves. Then we come back together, we discuss, they discuss with their partners, we discuss as a class, the answers and how we got those answers. Lots of oracy, talking to each other, completing sentence stems, and things like that to promote speaking, correcting English and all of that. And so that's the problem set that we do together. And I have all of those problems on a PowerPoint, so my students can come up, they can write on it, I can write on it. And so it makes it very interactive and it gets that technology piece involved.
The piece where she was talking about where they discuss and talk about problems together, that's called the student debrief. And so we go through and talk with the students. I talk with my students, they talk as pairs, and try to come up with some, maybe some misconceptions, some misunderstandings, and then are able to talk about it as a whole class. So, and that's actually been my favorite part. I've learned the most about my students in that piece, just because we're talking and we're talking as a whole class. Maybe somebody isn't as willing to share, hey, I don't understand this, but somebody else is. So it's been.
And we talk about there's all different ways to do it, and there is not a wrong way. And so in this process of the problem set and debriefing, I have them talk to each other about how they solve it. And they talk about their problem, how did you solve it? How did I solve it? And somebody will say, well, I use my five-group cards. Somebody else says, well, I use my piano fingers or my math fingers. And somebody else said today, or you can just do it in your brain. So that kid was using mental math. So you know, there's, that's that, you can see that differentiation within, in learning those different levels. And I'm fortunate, I have a parent in my classroom during that time. So what I can do after a sprint or during that problem set, I walk around and make a quick assessment of what they're doing. And then I say, okay, Amy, Gabriel, and Louise, you three are struggling with this. I want you three to go sit with Mrs. Gray, and then she can give them one-on-one support while I continue on with the whole group. So that's a way that I have, have worked in some of that small group to continue.
You're doing great, by the way. You get a lot of floor time here and appreciate the information. Can't help but ask, one of the concerns that I've heard is that we've done away with differentiated learning. But at least in your explanation right there, there's an element of that there. Fortunately, you have some resources there in the classroom to be able to do some of that. Whenever everybody does a, as a whole group, that's been a curiosity, is how do you identify, particularly with a big class, hopefully you don't have a real big class, who's struggling? And then how do you get them help? Do you just sort of try to identify that as teacher and then get some help with the parent in the case of your classroom?
In my classroom, well, I can identify who those kids are from their work the day before or from that activity that we just did, and I can send them with my parent. And another way is I can look at their exit tickets and some of their work through the day. Julian's going to talk about that in a second. And I can pull them the next day during another time to work with those students who need it. In the afternoon, later in the afternoon, I have some conferencing time. During independent reading time, I can pull, you know, a couple of kids over and work with them. Differentiation can also just be, here are some chips for you. You, you three use these chips and you guys are really good at those rec and recs. You guys use your rec and recs. So knowing your students and knowing what they need to learn and how they learn best, I can provide materials to those, to those kids that they need.
So they don't all have to do the same?
No, they don't. At least a lot of my classroom, and I think any good teacher, anybody who knows good practice, would give each, treat each kid as an individual rather than, rather than a group. You know, that's, I'm, I'm very pleased with the way it's working in my classroom. I found a way to make it work, so that every kid's getting what they need. It's different than, than it was the last eight years, but it's, it's awesome. I'm staying at work and I'm really happy with it.
And I'm like, Megan, I have, do not have a parent in my classroom during that time. So I do have to make sure I'm roaming and checking in with those students that I know had problems the previous day or.
Well, and you know, you, you can never depend on that help to be there all the time because they get pulled for other things. So yesterday, she was gone, she had an appointment, and the day before, she was doing some testing with another class. So I don't depend on her, but when she's in there, I find a useful way to use her. So she's not just, I don't want her to just, you know, float either. I want her to, you know, be working as, as close as she can with students.
On the back of that sprint paper is the exit ticket. And that is something that the students do independently. This was something that we did early on in the year. These were number ones. And in second grade, this would have been something that they would have learned in first grade. Thankfully, my kids had a couple of grade teachers that tried this last year. And so they, they had some background knowledge on number ones. So this was an exit ticket, and the exit ticket is used to assess that day's lesson. And you have a question?
Yes. First grade and second grade?
Yes.
So you talk about all these things that you guys do every day. So at the end of the week, is there a test that they take? I mean, is this the test or how do you test that you know this kid understands all this?
There is a, and depending on the module, there's different modules within this Engage New York. There's mid-module assessments and then there's end module assessments. And you use a rubric to assess those tests.
So there is a test?
There's a formal assessment in the middle of module and a formal assessment at the end. And then the other assessment that you do throughout the module, which for, for my grade level, there are thirty-nine lessons in module one. Module two only has like thirteen. So it varies from module to module. It's just informal daily assessment and working with students, seeing their exit tickets, seeing their problem sets, which are their, their practice problems. So it's just an informal teacher assessment type of assessment.
I'm just trying to get the idea of how do we get the parents in their age? Because we can give these to the parents that go have due deserving eyes, but at the end of the week, I need to know that my child understands this and how do you give them that test? I guess it's, because I was understanding that there was no test, but there is a test that you give after each module.
And I send home the, I don't send home homework, but my students take home their practice, their problem sets and their spreads, things that we do in the classrooms, so parents can see on that how they're doing through the lessons and.
And do you see a problem with the, with the students struggling with reading? Having a problem with those kinds of reading?
I read them.
Math problems or do you read them?
I read them.
Okay.
They're, yeah, they're first grade. So I read them, to them, we circle key information together. Once they get, get started, I'm walking around going to those students who I know struggle, we're rereading it together, we're talking about it. So it's not like I just say, here you go, and.
Well, I saw that and you said first grade. And these kids can read pretty good.
Yeah. No, no, no. I, I, to them, we read together, we, we highlight, circle information together. Once they understand what's asking, then they work independently with each other and then we, we gather back in the whole group.
And even on the problem set, there are problems that are story problems, application problems. So at the beginning of the year, we did those problem sets together. You know, there were maybe six problems in number one. We did three of them together, then they did the other, tried the other three on their own.
Right.
I don't mean to cut you off, but Dr. Dennis has been trying to.
Well, yeah, we, this is K one-two, basically, the lower grades. I wanted to bring Nate up here to talk about upper elementary as well. Great job, Dennis. Great job.
Thank you so much. We still come back to you, so.
Once again, I'm Nate Hudson, I teach fourth grade at Buffalo Jones. Before I get into my actual presentation, I'd like to just step in two things that were mentioned as I was standing listening. One is the differentiation piece, and the other is the assessments. To your question, I actually brought mid-module assessments to show you, so in my presentation, I'll get your hands on those. And to your differentiation piece, I just wanted to step in and just quote just a little of this, this yellow packet's been sort of my bible. It's, it's everything that I need to know about Engage New York and questions that I have. And it talks specifically about differentiation instruction, differentiated instruction. And it says that it can't just be an extra thing here for someone who's considered higher or cutting something away for someone who's considered behind, that the modules themselves scaffold to what I would say pick-up students along the way. And I just wanted to highlight that it also includes and talks about ELL students, it talks about students with disabilities, it talks about students that are below grade level, and with each one of those, it gives me three different categories to look into. And one is multiple means of representation, so how I'm showing things. Another is multiple means of action and expression, so even my language that I'm using. Maybe I'm sticking to one way and I just need to say it a different way to hit different students. And then the third way is multiple means of engagement. So, and that's what we're stepping away. It's just new ways. So, I mean, I have things to go to on the differentiation piece, and I just didn't want to get into my presentation and skip over that, so.
Can I ask one quick question?
Absolutely.
We, in the past, as a district, have talked in terms of ILPs for individual kids that need an individual learning plan.
Yep.
How do we incorporate those in the district?
Well, the biggest thing that I would say is, in, in our meetings, we talked about, we kind of knew that the differentiation question would come up. At this moment, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Maybe you collaborate?
Yeah. The, the biggest, the biggest thing, and, and yeah, the meetings that we have to go about those, I mean, things may be working for me that I need to share and go along with. The biggest thing in difference for me, and it's those students that may not have IEPs and are down there, but the students that have those learning plans, the language. I'm finding myself compared to last year where it was kind of like, I'm saying it this way, why are you not understanding it? Let me say it again. And I have a path to go this time, that I'm saying it in one way and showing it in one way, and then to those kids that may need a different type of, of learning, I'm able to say it a different way with different questions and then still be able to use my, my examples and models. So really, the models, I'm falling back to pretty much every time, but the way that I'm going about with my language, because I do talk a lot, I mean, this is a lot of information. That's really the best I can do right now.
So your, your point there is then that the bible you're going back to, that, that framework allows you some freedom to teach?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I, I have not once this year, and I did not pilot, I did not do any Engage New York last year. Day one of this year was my first day, and I have not felt restricted in any way this year. So I definitely have the freedom, if it's a question of if I have the freedom or the ability to help them, I have plenty of outlets and plenty of ways to get that done. Hope that answers your question.
It's just along that concept of you're wrong if you use this one, you're right if you use this. Well, freedom to teach to me would be whatever works for you to count. You know, sure, there's a purpose for sequencing, but if it's easier at this point to get information conveyed to let us count traditionally as kids, is there freedom to do that or do we somehow grade against that?
Well, one, one more thing I'd add on that is that my lesson today was a perfect example of what we're talking about. I wish you could have seen it. Every day, I start the lesson by saying, today, the lesson is, and in their notebooks, they're titling the lesson with the lesson number. Today was eleven, and then some sort of witty title that I gave it and keeps them wondering about it. And today, I put lesson eleven, addition. And I have fourth grade students, and you can imagine many of them said, why are you teaching addition? I can add, I can put an into it. And I opened the lesson by saying, if I asked you to add two thousand something and three thousand something, what would you do? Oh, I'd just stack it on top of each other and we move on with life. And that's, all of them said that. Well, I said, well, what if I had a piece of wood and I wanted to put it on this wall? What would you do? And most of them said that they would get out a hammer and a nail and they'd add it to the wall. And I said, that's great. That's your standard algorithm. That's stacking the numbers. Most of us can do that without thinking about it. Well, today, I'm going to show you other ways to get the wood out of the wall. And I said, think about it. One kid said I could glue it to the wall. One said I could tape it to the wall. One said I could use a screwdriver. And I said, those all work too. Today, I'm going to show you multiple ways to do the addition problem. And that's what I'm talking about where it picks kids up along the way. I have kids that can do the addition stacking and they move on with life. I have other kids that can't see it, and that's why I'm showing other methods to like a tape diagram and place value, carrying the dots. There's multiple ways for my fourth grade students to pick up along the way, and the hope is that at the end module, every kid is able to do at least one of those things. And at the end of fourth grade, they may leave fourth grade drawing tape diagrams, but at that point, they're reading problems and they're doing problems. So that's sort of what I'm hitting at. I feel like that's an example of what we're looking for here.
And I can get behind that. That's helpful to me. Some of the feedback I've heard anyway is this concern of, of not enough freedom to teach. In other words, we've got concepts in the curriculum, but if we have to implement it with vitality and the interpretation of that statement is you've got to use the manipulative prescribed, and you've got to do it on the day that everybody else is doing it, then that's pretty restrictive. And it, it knocks on the door of, well, we don't need certified teachers to do that. But the certified teacher professionalism comes in on how to take the curriculum and inspire the kids and get the core information and, and the freedom to use other methods as long as the concepts are available.
It's not a trick either. I'm not trying to trick them into doing it a different way. The standard method was labeled in their notebooks today as the standard method, and actually, the worksheet said, please use the standard method for the first six. For the next six, I'd like you to try the tape diagram. It has them using it. So that flexibility, to me, is there. And that was not something I came up with. I didn't say, well, let's put the standard. It was there in my lesson for today embedded, so that piece is there already for me and I just want to relay it. I'd like to step back actually just to, to last year a little bit, and I spent all of last year planning the mathematics. I, I just taught the one block, but I planned it using the transitional curriculum. And the biggest issue that I ran into was that nothing seemed concrete to the students. If you talked to me at all about math last year, I would have gone like this at some point because it seemed like my kids were grasping my clouds all year. Especially about seventy percent of my year was fractions. You can imagine fractions when I don't have something concrete to give them, they spent most of the year kind of like, oh, what's a fraction? Like it's a, like it's a cloud. And initially, I also wasn't on board with Engage New York because I was struggling so heavily with trying to relay the transitional curriculum, and then this one seemed so intense that I was scared, truthfully, of, well, if we can't handle this, how am I supposed to handle this? So that was my initial thought last year. This year, I teach two maths a day, so I have, I'll be departmentalized, and another teacher teaches my reading, and students come to me, so I've been doing this twice a day since day one. I would say that a day in my math classroom, I won't run you through, I think you got a really good taste of a day and a life, but we hit the same topics that they hit. And we start with the fluency, the application. I call the bold lesson, which is the concept development with the problem set. And then especially the debrief, which is that oracy piece. So it's the same type of thing that you would see in most of the grades. I would say the lessons are consistently structured. The students know pretty much every day what to expect. I think if you went in there and asked, and they're asked to do some important things, not just this year, but they're, they're going to carry them on, and that's note-taking, discussing, working independently in teams, and then actually taking the time to review at the end of a lesson. So those are, I've got some pretty good note-taking fourth graders. I mean, some impressive note-takers. And I think that at the end of the year, I think fifth grade next year, when they come in, is going to be blown away by my students' ability of note-taking. So I'm very pleased with how that's been coming along. Let's talk homework. And homework, I chose to do it twice a week so far, so I'm not sending things home every night. Problem sets that aren't finished are not being sent home. It's, it's the actual homework sheets. And those are mirror images of my problem set from the day. So if you were to go into my class tomorrow and hand out a homework assignment, you would see kids taking their problem set, putting it with the homework, and folding the corners because they go together. So that goes home with the students every night that we have homework. And that's the piece that's supposed to help. And, well, I don't get this, I don't get this, it's a mirror. I had a homework last week and the problem set was six number lines. The homework was six number lines, just different numbers. Literally, if I covered up the title, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference. I would say that the curriculum is paced, like I said, to pick students up along the way. And choices on re-taught lessons, I use at least so far come from my mid-module, so this is a mid-module assessment, and I'd like to go with that first. And I actually gave this last Friday. This is on our first ten lessons. And on lesson six, I ran into a pickup and we had a rough day. And I went to the mid-module assessment and the end module assessment and made my decision on whether to reteach or to move on based on what these assessments were. So these assessments are also based on the standards that the students are expected to know. And we decided, well, I decided, that lesson six was imperative to the standards to these tests, so we went back and we re-taught. I chose, I have about four days this module to do that, and I had the freedom to do that. Now, after these are done, I use this, which is a mid-module assessment rubric to grade these. And I can also use this along the way in my planning to decide like, do I need to go back? Do I need to be going? What are my standards? This is sort of what I'm going off of right here. While I'm on the topic, can I answer any questions about the assessments?
I have a question. The, on, on this worksheet. The, on, on this worksheet, the way the questions are asked, sometimes it asks for a value, deeper evaluation, broader evaluation on what you were describing with the block of wood on the wall. I think I would have got Dr. Edson to put it up there myself, but that's a more...
That's what we call a tape diagram, by the way.
Some kids, some, I mean, people learn differently and people visualize differently. Is, is it the concept you're describing in picking the kids up along the way that by, the classroom approach, that some examples may be more readily absorbable by certain students than others? So along the way, it'll click, hopefully? Is, is that what you mean by picking them up along the way?
Well, what I noticed so far, and I understand I'm going off of a few weeks of knowledge here, but what I see so far, and, and we're gonna talk about rounding, students and we were taught when we round, you go to the next place value, it's a five, it's up, it's four, it's down. That's what we were taught, you're looking at digits. This is taught rounding as using number lines. Every time you were asked to round, you created a number line, you gave it a midpoint, you put it on the number line, and you're rounding according to that. So the students who weren't understanding the rounding as we moved up to ten thousands and hundred thousands, that's where I have previous lessons that deal with hundreds of thousands because those number lines are simpler. But the concept is still there, number lines. The students that I have that get it right away, the more that we moved along, they were starting to notice the pattern. If the midpoint, which always has that five, if I'm equal or above that, we're moving up. If it's below, it's down. And so they were creating the number line as part of the problem, but then in their explanation were saying something totally different that I didn't even teach them. So they were picking up on what we were taught without me actually teaching it. So to me, picking them up along the way is using the easier beginning lessons. And then some kids are moving ahead of me as I'm trying to kind of catch up with them because I'm teaching something that they already seem to understand.
And that's something I think we'll move into later in this discussion, but some of that may in fact be parent teaching.
Yeah, that's absolutely possible. Because there are methods that we've learned that may not be part of this, but will show up later. And it's more patterns. I notice kids are realizing the methods as patterns as opposed to they are us teaching it as a method itself. Other things about the assessments, while that's fresh. To sum up, I would just say that I've seen struggle. I, I don't live in a perfect world just yet, and I see struggle and I see success with students as well. But I, so far, have felt that all my struggles are met with options. I haven't felt helpless yet. And the success that I see is met with what to do next. So I also don't feel helpless in taking my kids and scooting them along. I've heard that this curriculum is too fast, and I've heard this curriculum is too hard. And in my notes, and as I finish here, I just want to say that I believe this curriculum is hard. I believe it is fast. So, thank you for talking.
And along those lines, it's, we've talked and aspired to rigor. And I stand there to, somewhere along the way with these expert teachers that you all are, we want to be sure that we don't lose the inspiration and aspiration of the students along the way. That's got to be one of the challenges you guys are facing in this new curriculum.
They, they want to succeed though, because it is challenging. I, I, that's what I see probably the most, is, is that I'm finding that the students are energized by success. And if that means getting five right on a sprint, that they only thought they would get two right on, then so be it. They can find their successes however they want. But I'm just driving them towards this point that's in front of you and trying to get them all there.
And we've talked about this before, but sometimes success is measured in grade cards. And, and so I'm sure that's part of your consideration here is how to evaluate, provide the feedback in a way that doesn't make them feel like, well, I was an A student last year, and now with this new stuff or with this new teacher, I'm less than fifty percent. Because that feedback alone can be very frustrating. So maybe you'll address that later, but...
Can I quickly let you in on my plan, but I'll, I'll move on? My plan right now, because I wanted to hit on that, because on this test, kids had a hard time. Honestly, they did. So scores ranged from, and it's out of twelve, from sixes to elevens, you know, somewhere in there. And what I've decided is that on things like this and on the two homeworks I give a week, because I'm not buried in homework, that I'm going to be grading that objectively and giving it back and taking it later for whatever they can adjust it with. So, and that's, that's not me just marking it wrong. There are homeworks that I'm drawing the number line for, then saying, now use this, go solve. Because to me, giving a student something that they can do and they get an A, they may be happy about that. But if I give them something, they get a B minus, I do put some notes on it, they turn it back in and get an A, that kid is gonna be ecstatic about that. And so that's, as I see it right now, the best way to go about this is that we're gonna have struggles, we're gonna get things wrong. Let's fix them the second time around. And then at least that'll instill some initiative in them to wanna go get that A because it won't be easy to get that A. So I'm gonna turn it over and step back, but thank you very much.
Can I address something that you said? Excuse me. You said, you asked if there was flexibility for teachers? And what I would say another myth is that it's a script. This is not a script. It has, it has examples of things you might say or where you might lead conversation. So when I plan my lesson, I don't stand up there with a script or a lesson plan. I study my lesson in advance. So I know where I'm headed, and I've got some ideas of how I can get there. And you asked more about differentiation, too. If you walk into my classroom, you'll see kids using chips. You'll see kids using rec and recs. You'll see kids making number ones. You'll see kids doing number sentences. And so what, how I see it, I guess, is that I'm, I, they have a toolbox. And I'm filling their toolbox with all these different ways that they can do math. And then I let them choose. So today, when I was walking around, some kids were using math fingers. Some kids were counting traditionally. To me, that doesn't, that's not an issue. They're, they're doing math and they're coming to a right answer. And so it, it's, it's really surprising if you see a lesson because I had all those same myths too, or I had all the same impressions also. And, and so I, like I said, I am not a textbook teacher. I've always been a hands-on. I like to take my curriculum, I like to take my scope and sequence, and I like to teach. And so I was really hesitant, really hated putting all of my centers away that I've spent hours and money making and building. But if we would go back to centers, I would take several things from this, from these lessons, and I would use them if we did go back because there's, there's lots of good stuff there.
What I heard you describe was in fact, being in favor of centers. You have options now, like pulling together a couple of team members and kids that have similar struggles and have them work together on it. So I think that's great.
And they are, they are working in small groups, they are working in partners. It's not just a teacher up there teaching. That's what I had in my mind, that this program was going to be. And so if I could put you at ease in any way, I want you to know that's, that's not happening. And we're not all cookie cutters. We all do things a little bit differently. And there, I feel like, I feel like there is that flexibility, flexibility there. And that's why it's working for me. And some of those teachers who are still struggling, I think it's because they're trying to stay two minutes here, thirteen minutes here, ten minutes here, and they haven't given themselves that flexibility. But I would say that the district, you know, that, that's a myth out there. But the district would like us to use that flexibility and use that teacher knowledge and experience that we have. And so, you know, teachers need to get off that script because that's not what it's about and it's working. And you can mesh a couple of things that you're doing if you know where you're headed. So that helps ease any of that.
We add another document headed to permanent...